Is the public hearing for vacation on Liggett Road. Number four is the public hearing and rezoning for Project Turtle, which is Forsha, on Jefferson Street. Number five is the public hearing and rezoning for Southwest Park of North-Southwest Wyatt Road. Number six is also the preliminary plat for Southwest Park. Number seven is the plat, final plat for Southwest Park. Item eight is a site plan and design review for Project Turtle, which is Forsha, Forcia. I say it wrong, sorry. Number nine is a preliminary plat, also for Project Turtle, Forcia. Number 10 is the final plat for Project Turtle, Forcia. And in the final plat, item 11 is Four Pillars Third Plat, followed by item 12 is Other Business, and then finally with Adjournment. So we have quite a meeting this evening. And if I could, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Mr. Phillips, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded, motion's been seconded for the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Motion carried for the consent agenda. Now, we have a public hearing for the conditional use of Blue Springs Customs. Let me first read the instructions for the procedure of the public hearings that we'll have this evening. I'll open the public hearings, and we'll call for the exhibits from our city attorney. The staff will make their presentation. The applicant will then make their presentation. Witnesses can speak in favor, then also witnesses can speak in opposed. We will have questions, a general discussion by the commissioners, followed by me closing the public hearing, at which time we will vote. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for the conditional use permit for Blue Springs Customs. And city attorney, if you would please read the exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Exhibit two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 24, 2018. Exhibit three, application with attachments. Exhibit four, 185-foot notification map. Exhibit five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Exhibit six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Exhibit seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And exhibit eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Jury?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Before you today is a request from Kyle Harris, on behalf of Blue Springs Customs, the property owner, for the approval of a conditional use permit to allow vehicle repair limited on the site located address-wise at 2900 Northwest South Outer Road, which is on the south side of Northwest South Outer Road, approximately 2,300 feet west of Northwest 22nd Street. The site covers about 2 and 3/4 acres, and it only encapsulates the one lot. It's owned, general business as well, and there's an existing vehicle detailing business on the property. The applicant is requesting to increase the use from that detailing business that currently exists to include some more vehicle repair, going from light mechanical detailing, adding some accessories, aftermarket products, tinting, tires and wheels, and some bolt-on exhaust as well. So with that, the request to go through this conditional use and have that approved is allowed within the general business zoning district with the approval of conditional use, subject to several conditions, which I'll go through here in a little bit. Also, since this is a change in use of more than 25% of the floor area of the existing buildings from the prior use to vehicle repair use, then they are required to bring the site up into compliance in terms of landscaping, buffering, parking, and other non-use, non-property development regulations. In general, parking and lighting are acceptable, and building improvements, and no additional building improvements or impervious surface are proposed, but there are a few landscaping, screening issues that I'll detail here in a little bit as well. As far as the use, the applicant, as I stated before, it's minor mechanical work with some detailing and tires, wheels, exhausts, et cetera, that is being proposed, which we do classify under the vehicle repair limited use. Some of the conditions that are stated within the UDC aren't applicable in this situation, mainly due to the open business hours that are proposed by the applicant. They did not, or do not propose to keep the business open after 10:00 p.m. Their proposed hours, I believe, are from 8 till 6:00 p.m. So there, a couple of those conditions are not applicable in this situation, as long as those business hours remain. Another issue that doesn't apply in this situation is the vehicle service bays aren't facing residential, so they don't need to be screened. There is residential behind them, but the vehicle service bays do face east instead of heading south where that residential is. So those two items don't apply. Other than that, the applicant and the proposal meets all of the conditional uses stipulated in the UDC. As far as the site development issues, the landscaping and screening, for landscaping, there are a couple areas that do need to be brought into compliance. There's a requirement of some landscaping adjacent to the RC zoning district just to the west of this property. So along that western boundary, they do need to provide an additional 51 plant units, and on the, and 22, or sorry, must either install 51 plant units along the west property line, and also 22 plant units adjacent to the parking, since there is some landscaping required on that parking lot. Also, there is an existing dumpster on-site that does need to be screened. Applicant has stated that they're happy to comply with both of those conditions. With that, staff will recommend approval of this application with six conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jury by the Commissioners? Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come up and make a presentation? You'll need to be sworn in, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead, just come to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, raise your hand.
I've been to court, but this is different.
Turn that way.
Raise your hand, he's always wearing the test warrant about to give this case. Did you hear the stuff you got?
Yes, I do. My name is Kyle Harris, I'm actually the general manager of Blue Springs Customs and Blue Springs Ford. I've worked for the company for 35 years, started out when I was 18-years-old, so I've been a resident around Blue Springs all my life. We've already done a lot of stuff to make this building much better. So that was an old Mary Victor down building, then it was fast and all. We've got it all cleaned up, got all the trees and stuff cleaned up out of there, and really what we're asking you all is to let us, we're taking basically our vehicles and just running them up to this shop, and that's where we will tent the windows, add custom wheels if a customer wants it, but it will not be done inside the building. Everything will be sold through Blue Springs Ford, and then will be installed in the custom shop. So that's what we're requesting today, and if we can get approval on that, we'll get to work on the other stuff.
All right. Are there any questions for the applicant? You need an address? She needs an address.
2900 Northwest South Outer Road in Blue Springs, Missouri.
Thank you. I gather not, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. I recall to see if there's any witnesses here that would like to speak in favor. Any witnesses that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and bring it up here. Are there any other questions or discussion between the Commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peel.
Were there any 180-foot letters that were returned?
Yes, there was one by a name of Frank Thompson, and it was just an insignificant address.
Okay, were there any letters that were received later as far as objecting to approval?
Yeah, no, sir.
All right, thank you very much, thanks Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or discussion? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
I would move to recommend approval of the conditional use permit, CUP 02186248, with the six staff conditions.
There's been a motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Cradoff? All right, there has been a motion and a second, it must be a roll call.
Plenary Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. That motion has carried for the public hearing conditional use of Blue Springs Customs LLC. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, now we'll go to item number three, I'll open that public hearing, same rules apply. For the public hearing, vacation on Liggett Road, and city attorney, please read the exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 24, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jury?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Before you today is a request by the applicant and property owner, Brian Carpenter, to consider the vacation of the build line on the property located at 3400 Southwest Liggett Road. This is on the east side of Liggett Road, approximately 575 feet south of Moreland School Road. It is one lot on half an acre, zoned, single-family, SF7, and this request comes at the desire of the property owner to build within the platted build line, but outside of the required building setback that's required by code. The property owner wants to vacate this 50-foot build line and build up to the 30-foot building setback required by the UDC. The build line was originally platted before the property was even annexed into the city, is platted back in 1959, and at that time is when the build line was recorded with that final plat, and is later annexed into the city in 1986. And under our current UDC, they are only required a 30-foot setback, but the plat does require a 50-foot setback, so in order to approve a building permit, we do need to vacate this build line that's on the plat. So approval of this request will allow the property owner to develop the property as intended by the current UDC. Additionally, staff also believes that approval of the request will not adversely impact any adjacent property owners or reduce the ability to meet the intent and objectives of the UDC or of the comprehensive plan. So with that, staff does recommend approval of this request with two conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jury? Gather enough, thank you very much. Okay, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Yeah, I can say a couple things.
You'll need to be sworn in?
No.
He's always wearing the test warrant about to give this case.
Yes, I do. Brian Carpenter, 3400 Southwest Liggett Road. Basically, I need to add on to my house because, if you all know that when they're built in the 50s, everybody either wore the same outfits, or they basically were really skinny people because the house is way too small for me and my son, and my girlfriend plans to move in, so that's what basically I need to do, is add on additional bedroom, because right now we only have one bathroom, so that's it.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? Gather enough, excuse me, oh yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fairbanks?
I'm sorry. Is there any reason why you couldn't build on at the back of the house?
Yes, I have a shop behind there now, and I didn't want to take up anymore in my backyard. So, and then the neighbor lady behind me, she kinda likes it open, and we've got a good relationship, so I really would rather have it on the front, the way I want to add the bedroom that's existing in there, I want to add a closet to that, so I can't really do that on the back of the house.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry, is there any other questions for the applicant? All right, now, I think, thank you very much. Okay, are there any witnesses that would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone that's like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I bring it back up here. Is there any other questions or discussion among the Commissioners? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion on this public hearing of Liggett Road.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Haney?
Make a motion to approve BAC 02186247 with the two conditions.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Casey? All right, this will be also a roll call.
Plenary Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. That motion has carried for public hearing of vacation of Southwest Liggett Road. This will be also heard at the City Council on March 19th at 6:00 p.m. Okay, now we will go to item four, which is a public hearing for Forsha, Project Turtle. I'll open the public hearing, and I would ask the city attorney to read the exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 24, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mallon?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mike Mallon, Assistant Director in Community Development. I will run through staff's presentation, and then I believe the applicant is here this evening and is planning to do a presentation as part of the site plan, design review, preliminary plat, and final plat portion of tonight's meeting, so just wanted to get that out there first. This is a request to change the zoning on the subject property from county, Light Industrial, Lighting Industrial in Jackson County, to Light Industrial, or LI, in the city's zoning regulations. Property is approximately 29.07 acres in size. The desire to rezone the property is to be able to develop an approximately 260,000-square-foot manufacturing facility with associated office use. Property was recently approved for annexation by the City Council on February 20th of this year, thus the rezoning request. Property is located north of I-70 at the northeast corner of Northeast 20th Street and Northeast Jefferson Street. It is highlighted in dark gray here with the white and black checkerboard boundary. Surrounding property zoning is Light Industrial in Jackson County, which is the current zoning of this property, that is the zoning to the east. The zoning to the north is Light Industrial within the city limits. The zoning to the west is the Adams Dairy Park Overlay District, as well as the same zoning district to the south across I-70.
Mr. Mallon, could you speak a little louder?
Yeah, sure, I'll move this a little closer. Does that work?
Thank you.
All right, sorry about that. The specific, again, here is an aerial photograph of the site. As you can see, it is currently vacant or undeveloped, and it is being rezoned to allow for manufacturing industrial development on the site. The comprehensive plan designation for the property is industrial, which allows for areas for assembly, processing, warehousing, limited manufacturing, and offices that support the principal production and employment function of the area. The Light Industrial Zoning District classification under the Unified Development Code is primarily intended to accommodate industries that produce finished products from semi-finished materials and require little or no outside storage. The proposed use within the code under which the manufacturing facility would fall under is manufacturing general, and that land use is permitted by right in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The rezoning criteria outlined in the city code are provided to give the Plenary Commission and City Council the guidance under which they should review a proposed amendment to the official zoning map, and I will run through those criteria with staff comment on each of those. The first finding is that the application is accordance with the comprehensive plan, and as I mentioned earlier, staff believes that this requested rezoning is in conformance with the comprehensive plan designation of the property as industrial. Number two, that the application furthers the intent of the proposed zoning district in support of budding zoning districts, and the Light Industrial Zoning District being proposed is compatible with existing and adjacent zoning districts in the area. The next criteria is the compliance of any proposed development with the requirements of the Unified Development Code. As you will see subsequently in the following applications for preliminary plat, final plat, and site plan design review, the project meets or exceeds all aspects of the Unified Development Code, and complies with setbacks and landscaping and parking and things of that nature. The next criteria is the ability of the city or other government agencies to provide services to this property. All services are available, their property is surrounded or bordered on two sides by existing roads, and existing utilities are in the area. The next criteria is the effective approval of the rezoning on the likelihood of development on surrounding properties, and staff finds that the approval of this zoning request for a Light Industrial Zone and a Manufacturing Land Use would allow adjacent properties that aren't currently developed to be developed in accordance with the code, or should those be annexed from Jackson County into the city limits in the future and zone? The development possibilities are still there. The next criteria is that the requested rezoning is justified by a change in conditions in the area, since the existing zone was adopted, and that existing, or that change in conditions is the fact that the city annexed the property. And so the Light Industrial District that was in the county should be updated to be a city zoning district now that the property is within the city limits. The final two criteria are the consistency of the application with adopted policies of the city, and finally, the recommendation of professional city staff. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request based upon the criteria noted above. The proposed zoning provides a suitable location for an industrial use within the city that is compatible with adjacent land uses without having a detrimental impact on adjacent properties. That concludes staff's presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Mallon? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, would the applicant like to come forward to make a presentation? You will need to be sworn in with your name and address, please.
He's always wearing the test warrant about to give this case. Did you hear the stuff you got? I do. Madam Chairwoman, members of the commission, Tim Crockett with Crockett Engineering Consultants' Office is at 1,000 West Niffling, Columbia, Missouri. Tonight, I'm here representing Landmark Blue Springs LLC, as well as Forsha. I think Mr. Mallon did an excellent job with his staff report regarding the rezoning of this piece of property. Couple items I'd like to highlight is, you know, it is currently zoned Light Industrial in the county, so by annexing the property into the city, this purpose and the reason for the rezoning, however, it's a light-type zoning that we have in the county that we'd like to bring forward into the city as the property is annexed. Secondly, the existing zonies in the area are complementary to what we're asking for. We have Light Industrial to the north, we have Light Industrial to the east, we have right-of-way for Jefferson Street, as well as I-70 to the south, and then, of course, we do have the Overlay District to the west that we want to be cognizant of, and we'll discuss that in a little more detail when we show our site plan here in the future, talking about how we want to address that. But again, it does conform with the all aspects of the UDC, which is very important, as well as the comp plan. And so not many times do you have something that comes forward that has in full compliance of both of those, and so we don't take that very lightly, we're appreciative of staff and their review of the site, and give a favorable consideration with regards to our request tonight. I will be giving a presentation with regards to the site plan itself here just a little bit later on, but right now I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to the zoning of this piece of property.
Do the Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Crockett? I gather not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any witnesses that would like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone would like to speak in opposition? Yeah, I'll bring it back up here, are there any questions or comments or discussion with the Commissioners? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Close the public hearing for the rezoning of Project Turtle Forsha, and I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Phillips?
I would move we recommend approval of the rezoning, RZ 02186250.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Fairbanks? I had a motion and a second, this will be a roll call.
Plenary Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. Motion has carried for the Project Forsha rezoning. That will be also heard at the City Council, March 19th, again, they meet at 6 o'clock. Now, we will go on to the public hearing for the rezoning of Southwest Park. I'll open the public hearing, and would the city attorney please read staff the exhibits? Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 6, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. Nine, letter dated February 16, 2018 from Ginny Graham. Ten, email dated February 21, 2018 from Chris Sandy, Public Works Director.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Wright?
All right, thank you Chairman Banks and Commissioners. Before you this evening are three requests related to Southwest Park, which is located north of Southwest Wyatt Road, approximately 1,310 feet west of Southwest 7 Highway. The first request is for a rezoning of the subject property from SF 12 PRO and SF 7 PRO to PLOS, which is the Public Land and Open Space Zoning District. This includes approximately 59.16 acres. This entire property was annexed into the city in 2003. This entire property was annexed into the city in 2003, and a preliminary plat was approved in 2007 for 117 single-family lots, which was known at the time as Chapman Woods. However, construction plans were never submitted, and the preliminary plat expired in 2009. A for-sale-only final plat, however, was recorded in 2007, which subdivided the 59 acres into three lots. Again, this is the Chapman Woods Lot 1, 2, and 3. The city acquired all three lots for future park and civic space development. The potential future uses are most appropriate in the PLOS zoning district, and therefore the city is requesting the rezoning. The second request is for a preliminary plat. There's three different scales to all three of these items. The first item included lots 1, 2, and 3, 59 acres. The second request for the preliminary plat only includes 15 acres, which is the easternmost portion of this site, which is located at the northeast corner of Southwest Wyatt Road and future 12th Street. The proposed preliminary plat includes two lots. The north lot is a little under nine acres, and the south lot is approximately five acres. The proposed lots both meet the applicable lot layout requirements for the potential future uses and the building types that are listed in the PLOS zoning district. Current access for Lot 1 is from Wyatt Road, with future access is from the extension of Southwest 12th Street and also a future extension of Southwest Major Road that will, in the future, connect to 7 Highway. And then the third request is for a final plat. Again, decreasing the scale. Again, this would just be for the five-acre Lot 1 of Southwest Park first plat. Again, located at the northeast corner of Southwest Wyatt Road and Southwest 12th Street. The proposed lot does meet the lot layout requirements for potential future land uses that, and the building types, including park or civic space, that are permitted in the PLOS zoning district. Five-foot sidewalks are required along Southwest Wyatt Road, as well as Southwest 12th Street, and will be required to be installed at the time of development. Landscape buffers are not required in the PLOS zoning district, however, street trees are required and will be installed in conjunction with any future development. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request, the preliminary plat with five conditions in the staff report, and the final plat with five conditions in the staff report. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff by the commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Wright, are there any current plans for this property, or are we just looking at future use here?
There was a presentation at the City Council last Monday, which did present the potential development of a fire station on this first lot here, the northeast corner of Southwest 12th and Southwest Wyatt. But that would be dependent on a couple of initiatives that are on the April 3 ballot with the Prairie Township and Lake Lottawanna Fire Districts. So that is the only potential development here at this time. As for the remainder of the property, it is designated for future park, but there's no timeline or details on any future development at this time for that site.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Since this is a, applicant is a city, did you make the presentation, or is there someone that would like to make a presentation on behalf of?
That was me.
Okay. I thought I better ask. All right. Are, is there any witnesses here that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? What about in opposition to this rezoning? Yes, sir. You'll need to come forward and state your name, address, and be sworn in.
I'm Leon Hubbard, and I live at 1212 Southwest South Crest, which is a street just before you get to your development. I'm sorry.
Do you sound as worried as that's where you're about to get into the truth?
I do. Do I need to tell my name again? No. No, we're not really all concerned about this being a park someday. Our concern is that if that ends up, and you don't have any idea of what kind of facilities you're going to have there, but if you have, say, you decided you need 12 or 14 soccer fields, zero-four baseball fields, you're going to create a tremendous amount of traffic to a residential area there, 12th Street. I know 12th Street is a supply street, or if we're going to call it, for the subdivision, but you're going to have traffic there that you won't believe, and you've got about 12 blocks from Leggett Road to the park property. And if you have that long a stretch, the kids' families that are late to get to the soccer game or something, our speed zone to there is 25. You're not going to have that kind of speed limit. And we just would hope that, you know, maybe instead of using 12th Streets to facilitate getting there, let's just kind of keep it to Wyatt Road. They can go down 7 Highway 40 miles an hour and get over there. So, and I met with the mayor the other day and said, well, you don't have to worry about a development there for a number of years. I can tell you that. But anyhow, we're just concerned what may happen there in seven, eight, nine years or something.
I can appreciate.
I guess that's my concern.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak in, was that on opposition? Opposition?
Yep.
Okay. I thank you very much. Okay. Is there any other general discussion that the commissioners would like? Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Fairbanks?
I'm curious whether or not, if there is a park proposed for this in the future, is a traffic study required?
Let our city engineer answer that.
Any type of development, we'll look at what the land use is, and we have certain ITE codes that go along with that and what the acreage of the development is, and that would either trigger a traffic study or not. I'm assuming that if it is recreational use, it would probably be off-peak, but we would certainly look at traffic studies at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm not sure that this is within our budget at this current time, so I've been waiting for a park behind me for 30 years, so I don't know. That tells you anything, Mr. Hubbard? All right. Is there any other questions or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Peel.
Commissioner Peel. I'd like to ask staff, were there any other opposition letters sent besides the grant letter?
No. No, sir.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right. At this time, hearing nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I move that rezoning request RZ 12176192 be recommended for approval.
I've had a motion for the public hearing for Southwest Park rezoning. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Phillips? This will be a voice vote again, I mean, a roll call.
Okay. Planning Commissioner Sanderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Casey.
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Chairman Banks.
Aye. That motion was carried. This will also be heard at the City Council on March the 19th at 6:00 PM. Now, we'll go to Item 6 and 7, since you've already done both of those, Matt. Go ahead, and if there's anything else with number 6?
We do not have anything else.
Okay. What about number 7?
We do not.
Okay. I will need a motion, if I would entertain a motion on the preliminary plat for Southwest Park. On the preliminary plat.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Phillips, you're on a roll tonight. Thank you.
Keep this movement tonight. I would move for approval of preliminary plat PP 12176193 with the five staff conditions.
I've had a motion and a second. Do I hear a?
I'll second it.
I mean, I've got a second.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Fairbanks? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carried for the preliminary plat for Southwest Park. Now, we have the, now, Item 7 is the final plat of Southwest Park. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Phillips?
Would recommend approval of the final plat PF 12176194 with the five staff conditions.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Fairbanks? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Motion carried for the final plat of Southwest Park. Now, we'll go to Item 8. That's the site plan design review for Project Turtle, which is Forcia. Mr. Mallon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners Mike Mallon again with the City of Blue Springs. The three requests next up on the agenda are for the site plan design review, SPDR 02186253, the preliminary plat, PP 02186251, and the final plat, PF 02186252. These three requests are for the site plan design preliminary plat and final plat for, again, an approximate 262,000-square-foot manufacturing facility to be located on approximately 29 acres. Property is located at northeast, northeast corner of Northeast 20th Street and Northeast Jefferson Street. Bear with me for one second. I will first discuss the, I guess I'll do the, in order of the application. The site plan before you proposes one 262,000-square-foot manufacturing facility to be located on what I will show you in a few moments is Lot 1 of the proposed Forcia plat. It's on 25 point, approximately 25.68 acres is the size of Lot 1 to accommodate the proposed building and associated landscaping, parking, and other site improvements. The proposed land use, as mentioned previously, is manufacturing general, which is permitted in the light industrial zoning district. The proposed building type, under the Unified Development Code, is general industrial, again, which is a permitted building type in the light industrial zoning district. This is a rendering or a site plan, zoning out when I should be zoning in, for, to help us get acquainted with the site here. Northeast Jefferson Street runs horizontally along the bottom of the site. This is Northeast 20th Street running north to south. The proposed building is located in the white area here. Parking lot is shaded in gray. Access to the property will be two access points off of Northeast 20th Street, located here and here. These will be primarily for the truck traffic. The building, truck service bays are located along the western side of the property. There is a access off of Northeast Jefferson Street down here towards the southeast corner of the site, which will cross over between lots 1 and 2 of the proposed preliminary and final plats, and an access easement will be shared between the two properties. This will be the main employee access for the site that leads to the parking lot that is along the eastern edge of the site. The office building entrance or office portion of the building and the main entrance is located along the eastern side of the building. The setbacks for the proposed building are in accordance with the Unified Development Code for the general industrial building type, which are 40 feet from the street frontages and 20 feet from the other two property lines. As you can see from the site plan, those setbacks are very much well exceeded. The front along Jefferson Street is almost 475 feet away from the road. Along Northeast 20th Street, it's about 240 feet. It's to the east, about 240 feet from the proposed property line, and about 130 feet from the property line to the north. Those setbacks are well in excess of the minimum required by the code. The proposed building height for, these are the proposed elevations here, which are a little difficult to read of the building. This is, the proposed building height is 42 feet to the top of the carpet wall. The maximum allowable height within the light industrial zoning district is 45 feet, so this proposed height is less than the maximum allowed. The elevation on the top here is the south elevation, which would be visible from Jefferson Street. This next elevation down is the east elevation. As you can see, the row of windows in this location with the awnings is where the primary building entrance is located, again, on the east side of the building. The north elevation is the next one down here, so this would face up towards the existing Kohl's Distribution Center. And the west elevation is the last one down here with the truck bay doors along the western edge of the site. The orientation of the building did have staff look at excess landscaping screening to help provide visual screening and other enhancements along the western side of the site to help screen those service areas of the building being along the western side of the property. There's a landscape plan, which I can show you. Here is the proposed landscape plan for the northern portion of the site. As you can see, there's significant landscaping along the western property line to help screen the service bay, truck maneuvering, and the bay doors along the western side of the building. There's substantial landscaping along the northern property line and enhanced landscaping around the front of the building or the primary employee and customer access entrance of the office portion along these shrub beds here, as well as in the parking lot. This is the proposed landscaping to the south of the building. Existing building is kind of right here. This does show what a potential phase 2 of a building could look like. The staff asked the applicant to provide that so that we could see how any landscaping that may be installed now, how that would be impacted by any future phases. Again, any future phases would have to come back through the site plan design review process, so, but we just wanted to make sure they weren't putting all of their landscaping in an area of the site that was then going to be removed by any future expansions. There is, in addition, substantial landscape buffer under the code. It's described as a buffer edge that is along 20th Street and Northeast 20th Street and Northeast Jefferson Street. There are multiple bio-retention swales provided throughout the parking lot to help with stormwater detention, as well as provide areas for landscaping on-site. This is a good exhibit showing the proposed shared access down here in the southeast corner that is the access off of Northeast Jefferson Street. Cars would enter in here and then split off to the right to go to the remaining Lot 2 of the property, or split off to the left to go to Lot 1 or the Forcia manufacturing facility. Stormwater detention is provided on-site through a, like I mentioned, the bio-retention ponds, as well as a large stormwater detention pond in the southwest portion of the site in this location. As part of this application, Northeast Jefferson Street will be improved, full-whip improvements to the industrial collector standard along the entire frontage of Northeast Jefferson Street for the property. There are no proposed road improvements to Northeast 20th Street. There is an existing curb and gutter system that runs along Northeast 20th Street. In addition to the Northeast Jefferson Street improvements, a five-foot ADA-compliant sidewalk will be installed along the frontage of Jefferson Street. Parking for the site is determined based upon the uses contained within the building. There is a manufacturing component and an office component, and parking is based upon each of those. In total, 300. In total, 343 parking spaces are required, and eight of which are handicap or ADA accessible, excuse me. And the site plan, as shown, provides 362 parking spaces, which is in excess of the minimum code requirements, but does not exceed it to a percentage that is not allowed in code there. It doesn't bump up against any kind of maximum parking requirements. Bicycle parking is going to be provided. As per code, 3% of the number of proposed employees generates the bicycle parking requirement. The proposed manufacturing facility will have 300 employees, thus 10 bicycle parking spaces, and they have provided 11, so that is in excess of the code requirements. They have provided a lighting plan showing the lighting measurements around the property line based upon light standards in the, in the code. Staff has reviewed these and find them to be compliant. However, a more detailed lighting plan will be included with the building permit showing the, the heights of the poles for the lighting, as well as the building, or the lighting cut sheets for the proposed lighting at that time, to make sure that they're compliant with this site plan design review application and as well as the UDC code requirements. In terms of signage, there are no plans for signage at this time, however, any signage permits or any plans for future signage, excuse me, would be reviewed by staff through the normal sign permit process. And if there were any need for them to vary from the sign code regulations, they could apply for a master or alternative sign plan. However, it's not known at this time whether or not that would be required. The building design, you find the colored elevation here. The proposed building design and materials, the materials, I have a sample of which I will pass around right now. Please be a little careful, they do come apart, so two hands. The exterior materials are a textured insulated metal panel, the metal portion of which is a minimum of 26 gauge and thus complies with the design standards in the UDC for non-residential development. The building provides a mix of horizontal metal panels as well as vertical metal panels to help break up the appearance of the building and transition from the manufacturing portion of the building to the office portion. The proposed elevations include a stepped parapet wall along the top of the building, storefront windows along the eastern office portion of the building, and window transom or clear story window pockets located around the entire perimeter of the building. They're a little difficult to see, but this blue stripe is the location. The blue stripe is being proposed to help, again, break up the visual appearance of the building, the predominantly white color of the building, while still providing Forcia with their corporate colors, which is predominantly white. I'll allow them to speak to that. But the, the blue stripe is being proposed to help break up the appearance of just a white building. The, all of the building materials proposed are in compliance with the Unified Development Code design standards for non-residential design in the city. As far as rooftop mounted equipment, there are proposed to be rooftop units along the roof of both the office portion and the manufacturing portion of the building, and they, those are proposed to be screened where they can't be, the code reads that they need to be screened from view or located in a portion or a place on the building that can't be viewed from 300 feet away from the building. And so, if they're located close enough to the center of the building, they're not able to be viewed from, from the general public rights of way. And so, any that are being able to, or are able to be seen, the applicant has proposed to put a metal screen around those, so that those are not visible from the street, adjacent streets, which is in compliance with the Unified Development Code. So, those are the, the site plan aspects of the site. If there are any questions on those, I can, I can answer those at this time before presenting the preliminary plat and final plat drawings to kind of help acquaint ourselves with the site a little bit more.
Are there any, Commissioner Billups?
Just, just one quick question, and I'm not sure if this is site plan or plat, but we'll cross it either way. There's a large utility easement, electric overhead line easement that runs across this site. Is that going to cause any kind of a problem, or are we going to have to relocate that?
At this time, with the development of Phase 1, we do not believe that there's any impact on that line. It's an overhead KCPNL line that runs through the site. Proposed building location is not impacted by that, nor does that building impact the line itself. There is a portion of the site where the pole, one of the poles supporting that line is located near one of the bioretention ponds, and so I do believe that staff or the applicant is working with KCPNL at this time to make sure that they're addressing the utility providers' needs by not putting things near it that, that aren't allowed. But in terms of location of buildings, parking, and landscaping, we do not believe that there are any negative impacts or any things that are going to prevent the development of the proposed site plan because of that utility easement.
So, we won't have to move that easement or anything?
Not with Phase 1. I do believe that there have been discussions, and I will leave the applicant to be able to talk about this a little bit more, but if there is an expansion to the south for our Phase 2 in the future, that portion would cut across that utility line location where it sits today, and it would need to be relocated at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pugh.
Mr. Mallon, is there any intent to widen Jefferson?
I must defer to our city engineer on that one.
Jefferson Street is a industrial collector, so it's 36 feet wide, so, excuse me, normally we would strike that as two wide lanes, and then we would narrow it down and have, like, a left turn lane. So, there is a left turn lane provided at the employee entrance, as indicated on the traffic study, but there, there is no need for any additional beyond our standard industrial collector.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
How many evacuation entrances are earlier in the building?
That I do not know. Those are typically based upon building code and fire codes and upon the square footage of the size. To date, we have not received the building permit plans yet, and so we haven't done a detailed review of that based upon those codes, and so the applicant may be able to tell you. However, staff has not had the opportunity to review that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Since 12th Street is going to carry the bulk of the truck traffic, is that going to be a?
20th.
20th.
Yeah.
Whatever that side street, north-south is, is that going to be extra wide to accommodate the truck traffic?
There are no proposed improvements to the existing road.
No, there's no planned improvements. 20th Street's already fairly wide because of the Kohl's Distribution Center.
Okay.
So, there's no additional widening, not widening needed.
I'm good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, well, go ahead and go on. Do you want to go ahead and go on?
Yeah, I'll go on and do the preliminary plat and the final plat.
Thank you.
The preliminary plat, again, is for approximately 29 acres and shows two lots, Lot 2 and Lot 1. Lot 1 being the Forcia lot, and Lot 2 being a remaining parcel that will be owned by the city. Both parcels will be owned, maintain ownership by the city. Lot 1 will then be leased to Landmark Blue Springs, who is the applicant, who will then in turn lease that to Forcia for the development of the city. But the city will main, be the underlying property owners of Lots 2 and 1 of the plat. This is the proposed preliminary plat. As you can see, the location of the building here in the middle of the screen generally matches the site plan and design review, site plan we just looked at, but it does show the proposed two lots. The lot line is generally in this location, running north and south. Lot 2 is indicated up here, and Lot 1. Lot 1 is 25.68 acres approximately, and Lot 2 is proposed at 3.40 acres approximately. The final plat, the final plat application further delineates the Lot 1 and Lot 2. It's a little bit easier to see the actual division of the land. The dark bold lines are the property lines, exterior property lines. So, Lot 1 will be the predominant, or the larger, too, obviously, at 25 and a half acres, and Lot, Lot 1, and then Lot 2 is 3.40 acres. There is a slight jog down here along the south, along Jefferson Street, which is the site of an existing billboard that is out there that was not part of the annexation, and so that parcel is not being platted. It was not annexed, it's not being rezoned, it's not being platted. This detail over here in the oval shows the access easement that will be granted from Lot 2 to Lot 1 for the ability to have shared and cross-access between the two parcels. It allows an access to be located on Jefferson Street in such a location that is better for site distance visibility for cars accessing that due to the grades along northeast Jefferson. And by having in that location, it also consolidates future access onto Jefferson Street, so we don't have individual accesses for Lot 2 and Lot 1 in the future. They can share this access, and an appropriate access easement is being granted through the final plat. That concludes staff's presentation on the specifics of the application. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat application, subject to the 10 conditions contained within the staff report. Staff recommends approval of the final plat application, subject to the 12 conditions, and staff recommends approval of the site plan design review application, which is subject to nine conditions. The main reason for the different number of conditions is that there is language in the two plat applications that references the need to record a DMA or Development Maintenance Agreement that is pretty standard with, with development projects. However, as you're aware, there's a code amendment to the UDC that you recently heard being proposed that will be going to City Council on the 19th. And if that code provision is adopted, then we would ask the council at that hearing to strike those conditions from those applications, because there would no longer be the need for that condition, because the development and maintenance agreements are going away, and those provisions, which are usually contained within those agreements, are actually going to be codified, so they'll be in the code. So, there isn't a need to have them as a condition of approval. However, there's, that code hasn't been changed yet, and so that's why the language is in there this evening. So, that concludes our presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Are there any questions? Mr. Mallon? Yeah, or not?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, I would make a motion. We'll vote on them separately. Applicant, would the applicant like to come forward? I'm sorry. We're just ready to jump in here.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, again, Tim Crockett, Crockett Engineering, 1000 West Nightfall, Columbia, Missouri. I'd like to thank Mr. Mallon for a very comprehensive staff report. Many times, we present before commissions and city councils, and it's not very well presented by city staff, and I think Mr. Mallon did an excellent job in his presentation and his preparation for this, for this request. With that being said, I'm going to go through my presentation relatively quickly with that, with his information that he's already presented. There we go. Okay, with me tonight is Nick Howard, representative from Farisha, as well as Steve Lane, who is representative of Landmark Blue Springs LLC, who are, is, you know, with the development group for this project. Quickly, just a real quick overall, we've already discussed it. I think Mr. Mallon went through the overview, the items with regard to the zoning, with the guards of square footage of the building, and so I think there's any new information there. Again, you've seen the site plan here. This is consistent with what Mr. Mallon presented. The item, the, the building in green is the proposed 262,000 square foot facility. The additional buildings in the future for Phase 2, excuse me, are shown in blue. Again, the gray is the, the truck parking, as well as the vehicular parking for the, for the employees as well. Real quick, I'm going to cover these items. I think Mr. Mallon did a good job, but these are items that are typically hot topics on industrial type zoning. So, we're going to cover setbacks, traffic, lighting, and a few other items there. So, one item here on the setbacks. Typically, we don't have the luxury of large setbacks in industrial development. In this case, we do. You can see the, the minimum of setbacks is 40 feet, 20, 40, and 20, and we're sitting anywhere from 130 to over 475 feet with regards to setbacks. So, this site gives us the luxury of really putting that building in the middle and really not pushing the limits around the perimeter, which is very nice for this piece of property. And the next item is traffic. Traffic's always a concern, there's always questions about traffic. We did a comprehensive detailed traffic study for this development, for this piece of property. We anticipate about 320 employees at the site, and that's going to be scattered, distributed over several shifts and varying hours, so it's not going to be all at one time. So, the morning, evening, morning and evening peak hour is going to vary just a little bit. We also project about 120 trucks entering the site. Again, that's going to be prolonged over an extended period of day, extended number of hours during the workday, so it's not going to all come at one time. It's going to be spread out. And again, the, the full traffic study that we did, that was performed for this site, had a couple improvements in mind. For the first phase, they've asked for us to adjust some timing of some existing signals along Adams Dairy Parkway. That's something that, that we'll comply with without much of an issue. Another item that they, they made a, an improvement for consideration, I believe is how they call it, is a left turn lane into our site for employees. They made that, you know, they, they don't say it's required, they don't say it's needed at this time, but it would be needed for Phase 2. That's an item that we're proposing in Phase 1. We want to make sure that with our improvements to Jefferson Street, we're widening that road, reconstructing that road, that we do want to have, put in that turn lane for the safety of the public, as well as our, the employees. So, that's being done in Phase 1. The traffic study is very comprehensive and, and, you know, contain the whole site. Lighting is always a concern, especially with the, with the zoning of the property next door. We are, we have submitted a detailed photometric plan. We'll update that at the building permit stage, and it is in full conformance with the, with the UDC. So, we're not going to have a lot of light spillover and going into the neighboring property, so we're going to be very, very respectful of that. Stormwater management, it's always a concern, always questions, how are we going to handle our stormwater? We're doing full detention and full water quality on this development. So, we're going to detain or runoff from the various storms, as well as do the cleansing mechanisms that we need to, basically, and bioretention cells for the site. Again, full compliance with stormwater regulations in the UDC. Landscaping. I believe there's over 4,400 plant units on this piece of property for this development. So, that's an extensive landscape plan. You saw that before you tonight. There's a lot of plants, a lot of plant material, a lot of trees, a lot of shrubs, a lot of screening that's going to go in due to the streets, as well as the adjacent properties due to the site, the building, the parking lot. All those items are being placed, and you can see the landscape plan, I believe, that Mr. Mallon showed. It's a relatively extensive landscape plan for the site. The intent there is that we want to provide adequate screening for the adjacent properties, as well as make it a nice environment for our own development itself. Ask a couple little questions. Mr. Billups, with regards to the power line, yes, it is there. Phase 1, we're working with KCPNL to make sure that we can develop around the existing structures and leave them in place during Phase 1. During Phase 2, there has been some discussion with the need to possibly relocate that power line, and it's more of a timing issue than anything. It's a, a long process to make that, to get that done, just with regards to construction time schedules for KC and PNL, but that is something that we are very, very mindful of, and been working very closely with KC and PNL long. With regards to Commissioner, with regards to the emergency accesses to the site, we will be in full conformance with all, all building codes for this development. Now, can I tell you exactly how many? I can't stand here before you tonight and tell you how many entrances we're going to have, but not only do they look at entrances, but they also look at travel paths and links from interior of the building to exit the site. And so, we're going to be in full conformance in that and meet or exceed all those, all the codes, so we won't have any issues with that.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, we've got some other representatives here that could discuss the development of the site, discuss building construction or operations as well.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Billups first?
First off, I'm very glad you're coming. I've been very excited about this project.
Thank you.
And I think I know the answer to the first part of the question, because I drove by there Saturday night and already saw the equipment on site.
Yes.
How quickly are we going to get How quickly are we going to get started and what is the timeframe for construction?
We want to move forward very quickly. As you've seen, dirt work on the property has already started. We anticipate having building construction in the relatively near future. And I believe we want to turn the entire building over well before the end of 2018. So it's going to be relatively quick build.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Billups?
Mr. Crockett, you brought up the fact of minor timing being done on Adams Dairy. Is that going to prioritize Jefferson or what's the...
No, what it's going to do is just, it's going to make sure that the lights function appropriately. So the timing is set for the current traffic volumes that are on Adams Dairy right now. And so when those volumes fluctuate a little bit, that timing gets changed just a little bit to make sure that each individual intersection functions appropriately. And so it could be something as much as they haven't been changed, they haven't been looked at or reviewed in the last four, five, six, 10 years. And so some of the adjustments might be needed anyway. And so the adjustments on that will be for the benefit, not just for this development, not at all, but for the benefit of the traffic, or excuse me, for the public utilizing Adams Dairy Parkway.
Right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's a good thing. I noticed that it says small automotive parts. Is that what you're building?
I can't speak to that.
Oh, okay.
I think Mr. Howard can speak to that.
Okay. I just was curious.
Do you need to swear in?
No.
Okay, so we're going to be assembling door panels, instrument panels, and center consoles and plant.
Okay, so you're going to put these on shipments? Are you going to be doing any expediting? I mean, I'm not sure where these are, if they're just going to be over the road?
All I can say right now is that for local customers, so we will be shipping to local customers.
And there's going to be about 120 semis in and out a day?
Correct, over the three-shift working button, yes.
And you've got three shifts?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask you, where are you originally or are you moving here from somewhere else or...
I'm originally from England, but I came to the US 16 years ago. I live in Michigan. I'm at the headquarters.
No, I'm just saying, where's the business? Is it relocated to Blue Springs?
Oh, sorry, no, 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 sorry. No, the business is not relocating. This is actually a new business for us. Extension to existing business, which we're going to relocate into Missouri from its current location.
Okay, thank you.
When the model switches.
I'm just, pardon me? Name, your name, sir?
Nick Howard.
Nick?
Nick Howard.
Howard. Thank you, sir. I just was curious. Okay, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
I was curious, are you going to have any chemical discharge that will need to be disposed of?
Nothing that's... Any discharge, any solid waste, any removal, any, I guess, waste from the property will be disposed of appropriately. I don't know if there's any chemical discharge necessarily, but any solid waste will go through a compactor system. So we won't have any, no hazardous materials. Let's put it that way.
Actually, I mean, the only, what you would class as hazardous material on site is hydraulic oil for the injection machines. So there is no other discharge at all.
Okay, thank you.
I think you were concerned about remembrance like so close?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, what companies will you be supplying here in the area?
I'm not at liberty to say that at the moment, but just, I'll just say that they're local companies.
I see. Another question with the traffic, eastbound traffic on I-70. Is there a further time study being done? Because I can foresee maybe a buildup of traffic at some time in the day, as many trucks as you're talking about coming off of that exit. So are you continuing to monitor that?
Well, we, when we do Phase 2, we'll probably, we will have to update our traffic study. But right now, our traffic engineer actually came out to the site and looked at traffic volumes at all times of the day and looked at mainly the peak hour at the most problematic time period. And so when she looked at that, she modeled our projected traffic in conjunction with that. And so that's what the traffic study came about and that's some of the tweaks that we have in the signal timing.
How many shifts do you have?
We have three shifts.
Three shifts, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Will you be shipping out all three shifts?
Yes, we will.
Okay. See, we're concerned about the I-70 traffic, so that's... But I like having a business here. Thank you very... We need an industry here.
It's going to look like Front Street.
It's better than there.
Go up to Front Street.
No, we need a business, we need jobs here, so... Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we have three projects. We'll need to make motions separately and vote separately on each one of them. So, all right, I would entertain a motion. We have Item 8, the Site Plan and Design Review. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Billups?
Keep this ball rolling here. I move for approval of Site Plan and Design Review, SPDR 02186253, with the nine staff conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Haney, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed? That motion carried for the Site Plan and Design Review. Preliminary plat, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Billups?
I would also move approval of preliminary plat, PP 02186251, with the 10 staff conditions.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Fairbanks, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carried for preliminary plat for Project Turtle, which is Forcia. Going to get that down. All right, now we have another final plat for the same item, same facility.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Billups?
Finish this out. I would also move for approval of the final plat, PF 02186252, with the 12 staff conditions.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, let me go back. Item 8 will be heard in 9 and 10. They, all three will be heard at the City Council meeting, March the 19th at 6:00 PM. Okay? No? Only the final plat? I have down.
The rezoning and the final plat.
The rezoning, okay, rezoning, sorry. Okay. Hmm. Okay, change that. All right. Now we have the item, we're down to Item 11, I believe, are we? Final plat, Mr. Wright?
All right, thank you, Chairman, thanks, and Commissioners. Before you this evening is a final plat for the Four Pillars Third Plat, which is located at east of northeast Porter Road and north of the existing two phases of the Four Pillars. The final plat is in substantial compliance with the amended preliminary plat and the amended PRO final plan that was approved back in 2005. There have been some shifts in lot lines, which have resulted in most lots being slightly larger or smaller than previously approved. But all lots still meet the minimum lot widths and areas. The common tracks include landscape buffers along northeast Porter Road and a six-foot asphalt trail through the remaining tracks, which will connect to the existing trail system in the existing phases. Sidewalks, lot landscaping, and street trees will be required to be installed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancies for each lot where required. The minimum livable floor area is 1,600 square feet, which is consistent with the preliminary plat and PRO final plan, as well as with the existing homes that have previously been built in the first two phases. And the minimum livable floor area has been noted on the final plat and in the draft declaration of restrictions that have been provided. Financial guarantee was submitted last week for a portion of incomplete row and oak improvements, as well as the incomplete sidewalks, trail sections, and landscaping in the common tracks. All those improvements must be completed prior to approval of the final plat for the final development phase. The final plat and required HOA documents must be recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits for this phase. And staff does recommend approval of the final plat with the 10 conditions in the staff report. And I'll be up and answering any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wright? Would the applicant like to come forward? You don't need to be sworn in.
Okay.
But I would like your name for record.
It's Tom Clemmons with Area Surveyors. Addresses Peel Box 324, Grandview, Missouri. I prepared the plat for this third phase here. It's just a continuation of the first two and then we'll be having two more once we get row and oak completed. Weather kind of shut us down last fall, waiting for power poles to be moved, so we couldn't get row and oak completed. But they have been moved now and AT&amp;T still has to... They moved a line, but it has to be moved again. They didn't get it where they're supposed to. So we're, we're going to be completing row and oak here soon, so we'll have the other two phases going through here rather shortly, so... This is just continuation of the same thing.
Okay, is there any questions for the applicant? Guess not, but thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the final plat for Four Pillars.
I'll make that motion. Make motion to approve final plat, PF 02186255, with the 10 conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Casey, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion is carried. All right. And we have other business. Mr. Allen, you had some things?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. There are no agenda items for the next scheduled meeting. So it would be appropriate, if agreeable, to formally cancel the March 26th meeting if so desired. And I do have one other item after that.
Do I hear...
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Billups. Commissioner Billups, well, I didn't even get it out. Okay, Commissioner Billups made a motion and Commissioner Fairbanks seconded it. Then we cancel our March 26th meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we will not have a meeting March the 26th.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
One other item, the next Eastern Jackson County Planning Commissioners Training. It has, or is being scheduled as we speak. It'll be Tuesday, April 17th. It's being hosted by Lee's Summit and just got the update this morning. So that is a go, just to save the date at the moment. They're working on speakers and such, agenda, location, things like that. But Lee's Summit is hosting. They have locked in Tuesday, April 17th. So if you know already that you would be able to attend, please let Karen know. If you know for certain you will not be able to attend, please do the same so we can start getting ahead count as much as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen, what time?
Typically, those are about 5:30 and they usually do serve a dinner with that. So it's usually like a dinner, 5:30 to 6:00, and then speakers, presentations, what have you, 6:00 to 7:30, 8 o'clock perhaps, the latest. Thank you, yes, that's typically the timeline. I apologize if you don't know, maybe 5:00 to 5:30 for the dinner and then wrapping it by 7:00 or 7:30.
It's going to be at the Gambler Center?
It will not be at this point. They're looking at, they have a new water utility building. I'm not sure where that is, Lee's Summit. But it's a new facility that I presume has some conference room space in it. So they obviously want to showcase that as part of this, but that's the current identified location at the moment. So apologies if I don't have any more details, address, or anything at this point. But again, more save the date and real basics at this point. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Allen, I want you to come up here to me, please.
What purpose, Madam Chair?
Well, from what we understand, this is your last planning commission meeting.
Well, now you canceled the next one on me. Apparently it is, so...
With us.
Yes, with you, yes.
Before I cry, you get up.
Up there or down here?
Well, wherever you want to go.
You're in charge, so...
Let's go down.
All right.
I'll be quick. We want to thank you very much. And this is a card from us. This is a certificate, it says Certificate of Appreciation. On behalf of the Blue Springs Planning Commission, we wish to award you with this certificate, Scott Allen, Director of Community Development, in recognition of your valuable contribution to the community of Blue Springs, Missouri. And our pictures. But we want to thank you very much. We know the hours that you all put in and we're going to miss you, but we're fortunate and thank you very much.
Oh, sure. No, thank you very much again. We're paid to do this and we enjoy doing it. You all at once put in the real work and the real effort because you're the volunteers. So appreciate what everybody has done here and continued to do. I know some of you have been here longer than I've been here, Mr. Billups, so... Doing this and putting in the long hours. So we always really appreciate what you do and you're certainly more deserving of these types of appreciation. But thank you very much. It's been honored and a privilege to serve you all and I wish you all the best. As the mayor would say, please keep making the city one that's on the move and on the right track. So, thank you very much.
Well, we know that you're going to go where your family is, finally. But we want everybody to know why you were leaving.
Yes, yes, so I could add that too. Yes, it's nothing that you've done for having... Take that, and you're the wrong way, yes. As I say, it's 15 years, wonderful memories here. Three of my four kids will always call Blue Springs our hometown. So that's, it's always been a part of us, one way or the other. And as I said, 15 years older. So we're all 15 years older, including those who are older than me that I'm heading back to be a part of as well. And I also say, I've spent 15 years trying to convince people to come down here. That never worked, so we're outliers and now we're headed back to make sure we're close to them as things continue on here. Thank you.
Well, the ones that might be staying behind, let them know that we're here for them, okay? All right, thank you. Thank you, Scott. Okay, with that, we owed him that much time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Billups?
If I could just take one quick minute before we adjourn. I would like to remind everyone that the Piccadilly Galaf to benefit Downtown Alive is on March 23rd, starts at 6:00. That is a ladies' event at the Conference Center. And we still have tickets and seats, tables available. And those can be purchased through downtownalive.com, downtownbluesprings.com, or at Vicki Jack's office.
Okay. So any other comments or events? Okay, I don't hear any. Now I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Billups, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Fairbanks, our meeting is adjourned.